I'm going to call the meeting to order. The meeting in Halifax, the preschool committee. This time is 6:01. And, um, we'll go to the floor. Oh, no, I was gonna... The meeting is being recorded and anyone that intends to make an audio or video recording of the meeting is, um, please let me know at this time.
Very handy, thank you.
Now, we'll go to the floor. Um, I'll put your names.
That's me, Jody.
Jody? Yeah. I was gonna look before, but we haven't had a meeting over yet.
I have a survey.
No, all right. I'm sorry. Jody? Just say President.
President.
Okay. Lori?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
I'm here. Literally. Anyway. I apologize, Jody. I just kind of made your brain leak. All right. Um, yes, I'm sorry. Um, we'll do the flag of the land with the leaders.
We are the flag of the land. On the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, any visitors like to speak? Do you have a question? No? Um, I was thinking that we could do the budget presentation and then adjourn to executive session since we have so many visitors, but we would need a motion to take the agenda out of order and do the budget presentation. I want a motion to take the agenda out or so we can do the budget presentation for Lori. I'm sorry. Thanks. And then we'll do a poll vote.
Next.
Yes, Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we'll go to the left.
Principal Prina is going to set it up for us. And tonight, we will present our preliminary budget. This is earlier than usual. As you know, we typically present the preliminary in January. And it was a team effort, but I would especially like to thank Sarah, our finance director, for making this a priority and for all the hard work she has put into this budget and all of our schools' budgets, especially this year we got them done so early. Just waiting for the presentation. Bye.
It's a brand new touch. So I'm trying to figure out.
I don't have a choice. She was looking. I'm sorry.
Is that the PEA?
I don't think that's the PEA. I think that's maybe your personal PEA, but it doesn't appear to be the one that's in the packet. That's the packet. So do the updated one that says updated?
I don't think that's the issue. It's only like the video.
Does the updated one say something? I don't think so.
Thanks.
Yes.
We need to ask preliminary budget that's on the budget.
The presentation updated, 12:58.
Is there anybody who can make that as big as a screen?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're already wearing that briefing.
So I'll go to slide number two and get us started. We always work with the principal and our central office team, and our principal works with their staff as well to identify needs for the upcoming school year. And as we create the budget, we want to meet certain goals. Obviously, to support our students' needs, to maintain appropriate class sizes, and structures necessary for effective instruction. We also want to respond to and consider the financial or fiscal conditions of the town. This year, the school committee has asked us to present a budget, a preliminary budget, that highlights the difference between level funded and level service. And then finally, um, to support the strategy for district improvement. This year, we promised a voteable budget by December, and so that is what we have done. We have also included a 2.5 percent increase for consideration as well. Obviously, level services is the budget that is best designed to meet a strategy for district improvement and the needs for our students. So if you go to the next page, the budget basics, utilities, um, will include an increase over a four-year average. The shared cost budget is included, but it has not been voted yet, so these numbers are subject to change. RIT and rural aid have been estimated. And those are both grants that we anticipate receiving in the upcoming school year. Homeless and foster transportation has been adjusted based on prior year's expenses. The budget has been adjusted for one known retirement at this time. And in terms of out-of-district vocational, Halifax currently has one grade 12 student in an out-of-district vocational program. We have three placements budgeted, and we will not know how many are going out-of-district vocational until April 1st. So that again is another number that could change. If we go to the next slide, level services. The projected level service budget for Halifax Elementary School for FY '27 would be $8,107,229. After the following offsets, circuit breaker, the IDEA grant, the RIT estimate, and the rural aid estimate, the Halifax appropriation for FY '27 would be $7,772,613, I should say, sorry. And this represents a 1.4 increase over FY '26. So we think that the level service is now the best suited for the needs of our students, but also realistic in terms of we really have tried to cut down anything non-essential to make sure that this is a lean and appropriate budget. Um, if we go on to the next page? Nope, sorry, up one? Oh, it looks like this one doesn't have the level funded in there.
Is this presentation, is this one not updated? There were two here. One's in Halifax.
So let me give you a slide. If you look in your packets under the other presentation, the level funding budget for FY Halifax Elementary School would be $8,40,429. After offsets, the appropriation would be $7,615,18, $813. This would require $106,800 to be cut from the level service budget. This will result in the reduction of 2.0 FTEs, 2.5 faculty positions at Halifax Elementary School. Please note, we are not recommending these reductions. If you take a look at what this would do, um, in particular to the class size in grade three, it would be at class sizes of 30. And obviously, not something that we would necessarily want to do if there was any way we could possibly avoid that. So the next slide presents what it is for level services, what your class sizes would be. First, what your class size would be if we had to eliminate two positions. Please note that these are anticipated where we would take the reductions from, but that we can't guarantee. For example, we could have more students enrolled in kindergarten, and that could, or fewer students enrolled in kindergarten, and that could also change things. So just please keep in mind that these are just scenarios that we were forced to consider if in fact we had to make a decision today on where those cuts would come from. So the impact would be the increase in class sizes at two grade levels, or class size would be impacted in one grade level and a specialist would be impacted. So those are the two alternatives that we're focused on when we discuss this with the principals. And the next thing in the packet, you'll see that Principal Prina has listed capital needs that are being addressed in FY '26 versus capital needs that he is proposing in FY '27. The phone system, I want to draw your attention to that, is currently in this budget because it must be done, it must be paid for in this budget here. So that's not a choice, and we have included it in the level services budget. We need our phones. So in your packet, you'll see a narrative from the building principal. You will see an outline of the capital plan over the years. You will see a budget from our finance director, Sarah Hickey. We're asking you to review these priorities. We're asking you to consider what capital plan items you think we should move forward to the town to consider for a warrant article. And while you do have a voteable budget this evening, I would recommend that you wait until you have stronger numbers with regards to the estimates. If you go back to page, slide number two, three, budget basics. The numbers contained in the presentation are built upon assumptions and estimates, and the numbers are subject to change. So as you know, special education budget numbers will continue to fluctuate, and we also have information from the state in particular. And I also pointed some other areas such as the grants, which are assumed and estimated at this time. So for that reason, I wouldn't necessarily vote a budget this evening, but certainly you could vote a budget this evening. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Um, well, I suppose we're getting, going to get, but you know, we had, we rolled over some like of the special education circuit breaking money last year. Is that all been utilized? Or is that something that we might be able to have come into play again possibly, like if we don't spend? Remember how we made that choice last year and we have to budget?
Last year, we offset the FY '26 budget. We had held $200,000 of FY '25 circuit breaker to spend this year on students. It's being spent.
It is being spent. Okay. I'm just trying to see where, where things? Any places for wheelroom? And we don't have an order from the town yet either, so they're meeting tomorrow. So we don't know what they're asking us for at this point. I mean, I don't feel like we should vote a budget tonight, but I think this was really helpful information for everyone to start figuring things out because even as we stand, I mean, I'm just giving my opinion, but I mean, I unfortunately don't think we're going to be able to do more level funded budget even with an override. So I could be wrong. I don't know. But I mean, I guess I should see what the town says, but you know. But yeah, definitely not ready to vote, but this is very helpful information. Do you guys have any questions?
Not at this time. I agree with you though. I think we're definitely not ready to vote. I think there's one discussion needs to happen, but it's concerning to think that level budget is probably what we're voting for.
Agreed. All right. So should we go to the executive session now or?
We would need to, now to address other things unless we would like to take another order.
The override.
The override study.
Um, I would like to actually, just since we're talking about the budget, have Jonathan talk about the override study committee. So we'd have to take another vote to take an agenda item out of order. So if someone makes a vote, make a motion to, make a motion to take the override study committee item, the agenda item out of order. And here from Mr. Seel. Okay.
Second.
All right. And we'll go, Jody?
Yes.
Lori? Yes. Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
Guys, thank you for having me. My name is Jonathan Seeling. I'm selecting here in the town of Halifax. I just wanted to present to the Halifax School Committee an option and a position that I hope one of you will fill. We've started an override study committee. As I'm sure most of you guys have seen, communities like ours, we're bracing for tough financial times, at least next year and possibly in years to follow. So the idea that I kind of came up with was let's get some folks from different parts of our community and try and get ahead in as much as possible to give the town information as to what possible override would look like, if that's the direction that the board of selectmen want to go. So I would hope that maybe a member of your committee would be inclined to want to participate in our override study committee. Again, my thought is to have different departments in, discuss their budgets, discuss, I mean, revenue generation of, you know, best practices, make sure we're efficient as possible. And I think it'd be great to have somebody from the school part of our community involved in those so that if we are looking at an override, you guys know where this came from. It wasn't really nearly, it wasn't thrown together, and we turned it over every stone. So I'm asking for a member of the Halifax School Committee to be a part of this committee, as well as the Silver Lake Regional School Committee as well. I know they have it on their agenda for their next meeting. Full disclosure, we are getting a bit of a late start. We are in between town administrators. Things, I won't say got lost in the shuffle, but did get put on the back burner. So we're willing to hit the ground running as we're already looking at January. So that's my pitch. I don't know what the commitment level is yet. It could be as much as once a week, could be twice a month. Depends on how much we can get done and how much traction we have. So that is my pitch to the Halifax Elementary School.
Would we need to vote to have a representative or is this something that?
You could vote. I know that the subcommittee can approve.
Right. So to be more considered as a committee or? Okay. Could we have two if it's not in form?
I have.
Are you not interested?
Well, I am. And I don't want to say too many cooks in the kitchen, Lori, but we've kind of, we've kind of done the numbers. We have a member, we would have a member of your committee, the regional school committee, a finance committee, a selectman, three citizens at large, and I might be missing one. Oh, and the, no, I think that's it. I think we have said, it would be seven. So we like to have a lot of number on a committee, obviously, for any sort of voting purposes. While I appreciate the gusto and enthusiasm that more than one of you would like to be part of it, I think one for now would be cool.
What about one with an alternate, please?
Yeah, that's it. Somebody can agree, that's a great idea, Jessica.
Okay, you'll do it? Okay. Well, does anyone else want to? Anyone? Wait, I mean, I wouldn't mind having alternate. Is Jody, are you interested? Okay. Swift?
No, that's it. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So you don't want to do it? Okay. I'll be real with you. Okay. All right. So Jessica will be the person on the committee, and we'll go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So now we'll go to our executive session.
Before, I mean, can I just make one quick comment just to?
Yeah.
Sorry. Hold on. I just want to thank everybody involved in this presentation tonight. I know the town was looking at trying to get numbers as quickly as we could. Kudos to Sarah Hickey. Kudos to Jill. Kudos to the whole team for coming together and putting this in front of us so quickly. I do feel like it helps start putting the public pieces together and we're not at a final budget yet, but just to know what we're dealing, I'll be honest, I was getting ready for some horrendous news tonight. And while no cuts are great, I do feel like I'm breathing at the tiny bit of relief as to what the picture looks like. And I just wanted to thank you guys for putting this together. And I know it's extra work, and I know it's not an exact science at this point, but I just wanted to thank you guys for coming to the table with this so early. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
All right. So now, if someone make a motion to go for our executive session?
I would like to motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to MGLC 30A. That's two, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for collective bargaining for the Halifax constituents. HTA goodness, an updated HTA MOA, 0.8, and S7 supplies, any general or special law, approval of executive minutes of 8.5, 25. And to return to voting session.
Give me a second. Jody?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is yes. I'm sorry. We're in a sentence. Okay. We're gonna have to ask those two.
Have a good night, guys.
Thanks, everyone. All right. So now I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda. But first, I'll read the summary for the warrant total. We have $726,292.22. Our grants and donation total is $210,131.48. The total of $936,422.22. I'll take a motion and then to approve the consent agenda.
I'm pushing for consent agenda.
Okay. Does anybody want anything taken out for the consent agenda before we vote on it? Or have any discussion? What for?
I wanted to see the, I just want to talk about the zero commission. Can you help that out?
Sure. Everything else okay? Um, give us a second. Because we can approve everything else that's pulled out.
Oh, okay. Second.
Okay. Um, Jody?
Yes.
Lori? Yes. Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is yes. So now we can talk about the people who are interested?
Yeah. So as you know, the PTO has raised a tremendous amount of money for the school over the years, and they're donating, I believe, $7,000 to Halifax Elementary School to buy supplies and things for the, for the school. And we're looking to have approved because of, and I believe it's been past practice that we've been donating to the school for the past.
No, I just want to say thank you to that for that. I feel like it's, I mean, awesome.
Great, nice, great.
But also, is there, do we have like this much data question that might be done, honestly? Do we have like a supply closet? So if we did have donations of certain things, like, like say teachers wanted to do like an Amazon grocery list or something, like a PTO, a thing on the side, do we have a supply closet that they can like have them, and then we go pull up? Like if they want to do a bulletin board, do we have a closet that can have like a bulletin board stuff? And we're looking at this one today. People did like a, like a drive. It's just one of those things that like the PTO gives this money and it's great, and we buy the supplies, but does the supplies automatically get like dispersed and then that's it? Or do we have like a closet or somewhere that they can?
So we don't have a closet like full of supplies that teachers usually would go to?
Yeah.
But also to, it's looking at what the teachers do in the moment, and if they need something worth to buy for the minority, and have it used for the kids that would be, I'm sure that if we're looking to find or like build out more of a supply closet somewhere else, I'm sure that I could find someplace to, to store materials, but, yeah. But I can definitely connect with staff to see like what that would look like.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve the PTO donation?
I'll make a motion to approve the PTO donation.
Okay. Jody?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Great. So new business.
Sorry?
Well, actually, well, school committee correspondence. I had, I have two. Um, but I was, I had it down here. Um, anyway, so I haven't reached out to some teachers, which I feel like it's okay to discuss here because I don't think any kids are watching. They're having a door decorating contest like either the day or two before the holiday break. And so last year, I helped judge, and it was amazing and super fun. So I want to give someone else on the school committee an opportunity to do that. And I would give your name to the teachers that are running it.
What is it?
So, I'm sorry. I think it's the 23rd. What's the last day before vacation?
I think we're looking to do the judging on Monday before. I think it's our last full day.
Okay.
And then also, if people are looking to, you know, take down before the holidays, we can do that.
Okay. So probably on the days of the holidays, which is what they, wait a second. Right. So you'll do it? And then I'll, okay. All right. Great. It was, that was a super impressive offer. Anyway. All right. We already talked, it was really great. So now we'll do the ATS sub-rate change discussion and vote.
So I have been asked by our HR director to recommend that our cafeteria rates for subs be changed to step one of our power rate. This aligns with our parent and cafeteria helpers. This would be effective as of the vote, but not retroactive. And we believe that this would help increase the number of people who are going to substitute in our cafeteria. Right now, they can go to some of our other schools and make more money.
And this is a revolving account, correct, for the cafeteria, so it doesn't impact our budget?
So she's put a memo information inside the packet, and she's helping people vote to approve her proposal.
Anybody?
I'll just say.
Um, I mean, the, since it's not going to impact our actual budget, like our budget here, I mean, I find that if they feel like the revolving account can support that, if we can make things getting subs easier, I support it. So.
Should we, can we just clarify for folks that aren't aware of what that means?
Sure.
revolving account means?
Sure. Um, I can, oh, go ahead. Thanks.
Okay.
It's called revolving account because unlike the school budget, which begins on September 1st, it ends on June 30th of the town's budget, a revolving account can carry over funds from year to year. So the food service revolving account gets funds in it from the federal school lunch, from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the school lunch program, from Massachusetts with free lunch program. It's where all of the MySchool bucks that parents pay goes into that account. And then out of that account is pays for your cafeteria staff. And milk and cookies, chicken patties and all of that.
And our cafeteria director is presenting this proposal?
Yes.
because he feels that it is reasonable and within the means of that revolving account.
Yes.
sustainable.
Okay. I make a motion to accept our proposal. Okay. Give us a second. All right. Jody?
Yes.
Uh, Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is yes. All right. Do we need the ATS to sort of contract the discussion? Do you want to speak that first or?
Yes, I'm asking the committee to vote to support the contract changes as presented and to allow chairperson laws to sign on behalf of the committee.
I'll make a motion to accept that and allow chairperson laws to sign on behalf of the committee. That's a good question. Give us a second.
Sarah, can we say it more, sorry. How many is this?
So this is the motion to.
Oh, because.
Yes. For the custard initiative, except, so the changes on behalf of this.
Give me a second before I was, when it's on yet. So I'm ready to take a vote.
Okay. Uh, Jody?
Yes.
Oh, right. Okay. Lori, yes. Jess, yes. Yes. Okay. Lauren?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now we'll go on to the HTA MOA. Now we'll make a motion.
I'm asking the committee to accept the changes in the MOA as a whole as presented and to allow our chairperson to sign on behalf of the committee.
So moved? Can I say that to a lot of members? Yeah. You know, that's something that, that's something harder to read than you. It is a good one. Jody?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
All right. Next, I'm asking the committee to approve the MOA of understanding with the Halifax Police Department. This is our SRO MOU. There are no substantive changes since last year. It's updated annually, and we need your approval in order to sign and enter into the agreement with our Halifax Police Department.
So moved?
Second.
All right. Jody?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is yes. All right. And now I need to complete our renovation tour, which the rest of the school committee has been begging us to do. So Lori? So Lori, you do not want to be, what?
Yeah, so I would like to respectfully ask that someone else join the Palomary Collaborative Subcommittee. I've been on it for a year and a half. It is a very informative committee, but I'm also on the regionalization Subcommittee, and it's a lot of information. I have two pretty updated, pretty lengthy updates for tonight. The one thing I will say, it's a good, it's a good educational committee to be on, and I think that the administration for the Palomary Collaborative does an excellent job of answering questions. Their secretary put together this great update, and all I have to do is read it. So it's just, it's another meeting, it's lengthy, and I would just respectfully ask that someone else take that role.
Just for people's information, are the meetings in person, or are they?
They are all virtual, they are once a month, they're usually on a Thursday at, I believe, 6 o'clock? Do they have a Friday or six? I think it's 6 o'clock.
Okay.
And there'll be a meeting in January. We just did the most important meeting in December to approve an audit, so.
Okay. I have Karen listed as the alternate, so I'm wondering if I should move her to the?
Karen's already done it. Oh, okay. She did it before, I did it, then I did it last year, and we put her as the alternate, and then I carried it this year because she already can see, or we already can see in our committee.
Okay, I just kept it that way. Right. Okay, well, so, um, Jody, is something you'd be interested in?
I would be interested in questions.
All right. I'm happy to answer questions, but truly, I didn't know a lot before I joined it. It is very informative.
Yeah, so. There's a lot of learning to go here.
Yeah.
That's good. Um, the other thing we need to fill is the third person on Union 31. So myself and Lori are on here. So we have a bunch, I guess I should say, we have, I don't know if you looked at the various subgroups we have?
Yeah.
Um, and so typically, the chair appoints, but I also like to get feedback, so I don't want to just be, like, you know. But, so Union 31 is the school committee, it's, it contain, it has all of the elementary schools together and Silver Lake, and they need to make regional decisions. And so we need a third person, and Jessica is our alternate. So the third person would either have to be you or Karen, because Jessica?
Usually meets about three times a year.
Yeah, it meets about three times a year. Would you be interested in?
Yeah. I have a question.
Yeah.
So if there's three, a forum, then the companies have three of us on it?
There is supposed to be a forum there. Well, it's makes, it's to make sure we have a forum and it's posted. So it's posted as a school committee meeting, so it's okay for us to have all three of us there, or in the worst-case scenario, at least one of us there, you know, just because, you know, things happen. So we want to make sure we have representation, but also it is okay if we do have a forum there, so. And then the other one is admin review. That's the one that they're begging me to put someone in. I've done that one before.
I did that one, too.
Did I?
Yeah. But I, I feel like I stepped off that one, and I don't remember why.
Would you be interested in doing it again?
Um, if you need to do that, that would be great. I mean, Jessica, do you want to do that?
No, I have a question. You've been right.
Okay, after. Okay. Well, yeah, we have, so we have, everything else is okay. We have our youth liaison. Yes, Youth and Rec is your question.
Is that one, is that virtual, or is that just?
I usually, isn't Youth and Rec, you call Dixieal and say, what happened? I don't know. I don't know that they actually have meeting meetings. I think you just get takes from these, and I'm coordinator.
I'm pretty sure that's not Kevyn's, but, because it was Katie last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, that's why. Yeah. Pass her by.
Yeah.
To me, that's not right.
Well, the sick thing?
The alternate.
Okay.
Sick thing, alternate.
That would be, that's me, correct?
No, no, this is me.
Not really, yeah. I'll put myself there. Yeah, just being chair guys. Anyway.
I'll get some, I'll get some rec.
You'll do, you can.
Yeah.
All right.
They're usually available.
Well, and then the other one, I just had to use the rec.
Tonight, I just.
I'll throw myself on that.
Lauren, can I just put, are you an alternate for that one division?
I'm the alternate of the sick thing.
The sick thing, okay.
And Jessica is the Youth and Rec liaison now. And then my other question would be, that I wanted to ask, is if you were interested in being a PTO liaison? Do you go to the PTO meetings?
I don't, but I, I sort of.
Okay, all right, so I'll put you down as sort of Karen for that, because.
Who should have won it, I'm sorry?
I think so, Karen would have. I don't think, I don't think many of us were on that call when I was doing this, so it was a little bit challenging. Like, we did that in January, and not July.
Well, in March, or last year.
All right, so I think that's, did we get everything?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I know it's a lot happening here. All right, so that is done. All right, so full regionalization discussion.
So we don't really have a ton of updates, the contract with the Collins Center, Jody, the others.
Yeah. So the Collins Center is waiting for a signature. I believe it needed to be signed by Jonathan Selig and the Chair of Union 31. And we are now waiting for the, once the contract is signed, we're waiting for the Collins Center to reach out to us. In the meantime, we have already begun compiling information and data that we anticipate the Collins Center will want. And we have another meeting scheduled in January.
Okay. And as you expected, it's been about a year, right?
About eighteen months, beginning of the start of the signed contract.
Okay, and that was just signed?
We believe so.
Okay. All right, um, first little update.
Yeah, so we haven't been talking a lot, so there's been a lot of weird stuff happening at the school. Back in October, it was National Intentional Awareness Month, and lessons were taught at every single grade level, every single classroom of teachers and school counselors to really kind of teach those pro-social skills through Second Step, the Department of Classroom Dynamics lessons, and also messaging through the Pro-Road Carol to help at home as well. Parent-teacher conferences back in October were a huge success, huge participation, fantastic. Thanks to all the parents for coming. The PTO Scholastic Book Fair was enjoyed by all. We had a PTO Halloween social, there were hundreds of people attended. It was a great time for the kids, teachers, families, everybody was there. For our Book Character Day, staff dressed up as Wurz Waldo book characters. It was kind of funny, because a lot of kids didn't really know who we were. But they got a lesson in history as well for passports. Staff are really data-driven here at Halifax, and during the month of October, they were developing the Star and Dible's datas to make, make sure that kids' needs were being met. And letters went out to families, and they made interventions, and they did a really nice job of getting that thing moving and making sure they're looking at the data to make data decisions for our kids. And then we held our school council meeting, our first one back in October as well. Agenda went on time within the time limits and making sure that we have enough people on the school council to make sure that it's equitable for people.
Can I ask a good question?
Sure.
Are you guys working on the, what was it, the policy? Or the policies or the, the school, like, what they were working on last year?
The school council and the handbook policies.
Yeah, they're working on the policy, that's what it is. Are you guys working on the handbook policies that I want to hear?
One of the things that we're working on right now is looking at the school improvement plan and looking at the different aspects of it that are directly related to the district's improvement plan. We're currently looking at the survey that went out and seeing how we can improve the survey and how it can drive a model to share.
Okay. And typically, handbook changes would be, any proposed handbook changes would be presented usually in the spring by the principal, and they would be highlighted. And then the committee would have an opportunity to ask questions. Policies could be changed, but practices within the school, the handbook would be presented to you for review. And then the school committee generally reviews and then votes to approve, what not to approve, the handbook itself. Okay, thanks.
November just kind of ended, I feel like a whirlwind. But we've been doing a lot of work with TNTP and PRISM, thanks to Brian DeSantis and Dr. Clifford, and going through our ELA literacy review and having incredible teachers be open to have people come in and, like, look at different things to see how we can improve our, our practices here at school. Mr. Ruiz ran his annual Turkey Trot, which was a huge success. Hundreds of donations to, to the food pantries right here in Halifax for helping hands. And kids were directly involved in those things and making sure that kids were the process and that kids were the ones driving that horse. We had tons of people come watch the Turkey Trot, we went for a first experience, it was a lot of fun, running around with the kids to see, to make sure they're really active within our community. We are encouraging staff peer observations, seeing how we can, you know, get teachers involved in building our own practices with the end builders. There's a lot of incredible things happening, as you'll see within our MCAS presentation later, where we're really driving kids to be successful in ELA and in science, pretty impressive. And ongoing cyber training, just based on a grant that Steve Palo got us, making sure the teacher developed a capable of those cyber trainings. In December, we ran our first emergency drill in, in accordance with the Halifax Police Department and Fire Department. That went very well, we can make different, different things that we can improve in our practices to make sure that everyone is safe in different situations, you know, throughout the school. Those are regular, those are just kind of happening to make sure that kids and adults know what to do. Term over report cards went out today. Holiday in Halifax is coming up this coming weekend, the PTO mingle and jingle. And also, the chorus will be here. Their performance is at 5:00 at the 13th. We have a spirit week coming up with winter themes. Make sure that it's inclusive and making sure the kids are well-represented and that we're having a good time before the holidays, but also making sure that we're, you know, engaging in academics and, you know, making those connections. And our, I listened to the concert today, you know, the fifth and sixth graders today. They are, I'm looking forward to the concert on the 18th. Should be a really good time, and kids are working really hard on it. We have some staff updates. We finally able to hire a halftime B CBA that started on the first, which is great. We had a nighttime custodian resign, and we were able to hire them back in, it feels like it was in October, probably. And we have two paraprofessional positions open right now that are in the process of being hired. So getting, getting people fully, fully engaged in our staff.
Just to be clear, those, I'm sorry, I have to ask a question.
Sure.
But those are all positions that were budgeted for, they're not new hires. So just stating that for the benefit of folks that are budget-conscious, I might be doing.
Yes, it's kind of like a traditional.
They're open positions that were budgeted for.
Got it.
Any questions?
What's the enrollment rate? I know it was on the slide.
Um, it's 532. I can, like, as a, you know, pretty rough number, but.
Okay, no, just a very. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah?
I do not have to read this.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah.
I was a little bit. That's great news.
So what I actually point out, too, there's some clear touch here. I think it's like seven, five inches. Steve Palo and his tech team have been bringing them together. We're hoping to be rolling them out pretty soon through classrooms. We want to make sure that they're, you know, usable to the staff, making sure that things are going well with them. But there's also sometimes a little piece of training that goes along with it, so I just don't want to, like, explain them in the classrooms and go, like, here's a piece of technology, and then it just not be utilized, and I don't know if they're very teachers. All right, let's see if I, one of the tests on that. See how we have it down here. There it is. So the first part here is just, like, maybe how those things, a lot of the things are going to be there. I prefer just not to read off slides, so please make sure you're kind of paying attention to it. These are just the detail of the master's accountability system and the things that they're looking for. It's how the small area master's accountability system designed to measure how the school district is doing and what has supported the accountability, and considers all the learning things here to make sure the school is doing what they need to do. For accountability, for us, overall, and I want to say thank you to Dr. Clifford and Brian DeSantis for building this out and making sure that everything is here for you here tonight. So 2025, our overall classification is that we're now requiring assistance for intervention. Substantial progress towards targets is 62% of substantial progress towards targets, which means that we are, that we're doing pretty well. It's pretty impressive, actually, and it's something really huge to celebrate, because our teachers here work really, really hard. And even though we're looking at MCAS scores from third to sixth grade, it really starts at kindergarten and getting that rigor up and making sure that kids are learning how to read at such a young age. Yes.
One thing I'd like to point out is that the 62% is higher than the pre-pandemic level of 60%.
Yes, yes. At the end of the slides, there's actually a link to the article that was in the news that showed that we were one of nine school districts in the state from just like, which you're talking about. So it's pretty impressive, something definitely to celebrate. Our accountability, 70% on progress towards targets. It's great.
Again, higher than pre-pandemic levels.
Yes, higher than pre-pandemic levels. Statewide, this is just a historical piece of MCAS full test was taken last year, grades three to eight in our school. Summary.
That's the statewide summary?
Yep.
Not the Halifax summary?
Three to six, this is us. Overall, kind of gives a historical piece from before and now after. In 2025, we're at 62, before pandemic, we're at 89%. That'd mean you're exceeding expectations of ELA in MS. Um, grade three, percent of all Halifax elementary through graders being exceeding expectations. 61% before, we're at 69% here this year. And it's unbelievable, actually, it's really impressive. English language for fourth grade, same kind of trend. 63% of our fourth graders are exceeding in grade four for ELA. Grade five, 57% are exceeding, fifth grade, more than pre-pandemic. And sixth grade, 62% are exceeding in ELA for, in our class. So it's a quick snapshot across the board for the years of the kids for exceeding. Average of 62% overall, as opposed to 2019 and 2019. Let's take a moment here for the ELA, um, grades K to six. This is the differentiation, the structure, and the things that we're currently doing here. We're doing a curriculum review right now at phase one, it goes core program for grade six. Teachers are directly involved in that, too, to kind of see which curriculum you want to go to next year for ELA. Writing, this is a huge strength here at Halifax, and now that I just got here, I could take no better for that. It's a really big push within teachers here for years to make sure that they're hitting those standards and making sure that kids know how to do their writing with different prompts, and a lot of work that Brian DeSantis was doing with them, too, over the years, and completing that process. Making sure that kids have access to, you know, what they're looking for in the MCAS test, or they're moving forward. Math. Math for grades three to six, overall, went from 48% and up to 53% here in 2025. Also, a great trend from pre-pandemic, from the pre-pandemic era. Grade three, 65% last year, in 2019, 58%. Fourth grade, 45% last year for fourth grade MCAS for exceeding. Fifth grade, 50. Fifth grade, 15% back in 2019, 39. An incredible trend going up. And then sixth grade too, 78, but also too, sometimes a little stat who everyone saw. Looking forward to is that this year, we're also implementing a brand new math curriculum that hopefully fills a lot of those gaps and to make sure that our kids are continuing to move forward. Not saying that the work that the teachers are doing was any less than before, is giving them research-based curriculums to make sure that we're driving us and giving the kids a...
Back to the, don't mind.
No.
Just talking about that, there was a dip in fourth grade and sixth grade, specifically the standards of fractions in fourth grade, which is 30% of the assessment. It's a big year for fractions, and the students were struggling in fractions. So I just met with the type of teacher, the math teacher recently, to talk about the new HMH programming for particularly with fractions and that focus, because it seemed to be like a true weakness last year in grade four, so we can get that standard up. And in sixth grade, a lot of the assessment was algebra, the beginning stages of equations, and 30% of the assessment, and we fell off a little later. So it's those areas that we really need to focus on, those standards, so hopefully we can adjust up there here in math.
Great, thank you, Brian.
So, sorry, just to make sure I'm looking at that right, so like in 2024, grade five was a 59% meeting and exceeding, and then in grade six went down to 43%? Is that what you're just talking about? Okay. I just wanted to try to sort of...
Math in grades three to six, year one core is what Brian was talking about, with the HMH, just their first year implementing it. We have coaches that came in to kind of model, see what those are going, doing. We're also looking at building our capacity between schools within our district too. Not only in math, but also we have some great ELA teachers here that we can also share a lot of different interventions and programming about how they're teaching, especially the writing, especially the writing, and have them come over and watch some of our master teachers teach writing. Math curriculum review cycle, teachers are involved in that as well. We have benchmark data analysis, we utilize math, sorry, STAR, as our assessments for grades one to six for benchmarking, and that's the data that we look at in the beginning of each year, middle of the year, to utilize groupings with our tablet teachers as well as our math interventionists. MCAS analysis, we're utilizing this year too, some different protocols that Brian DeSantis has put together as well with our new team leaders, which I think is going to be a really good movement forward. Even like well before I got here, which was just a few months ago, the data focus within the school is incredible. They are really looking at the data to drive our kids forward, and that's just, this will just continue to get better and better and better. Intervention provides targeted interventions during our each intervention block. That's built into the schedule, and we have consultants and professional development days for that. Science technology, grade five, this year 58% meeting exceeding expectations. Continue to implement the mystery science program, gives it a five, insensitive grade levels and building out the curriculum. The kids are being, the kids are getting the curriculum vertically here at Halifax. Professional development training for science and health and more space MCAS test as well. Do you want to try to put a line up, Brian, about the performance piece?
Yeah, I think one more year is going to be a trial test. In 2027, the science, technology, engineering assessment will be totally performance-based. It's more an interactive platform for the students taking the assessment. It's more animation cartoons, and it's more problem solving. It's more of a constructive response assessment compared to more of a selective response. So specifically here, because the teacher teaching just science all day, she's going to have some state training, because they're going to do the, they're going to do some assessment training. So I'm going to send her particularly to that state training, because she's focused on science all day. And that'll, so another trial year, so part of the assessment will be not scored, and part of it will be in, and next year it will be total performance under the science. Hopefully she can bring back some good information to the district.
Great, thanks, Brian. District-wide initiatives to drive our teaching and learning forward is that thanks to Dr. Clifford, is we're utilizing the research-based teaching training for district teachers, principals, and coordinators. It's a research-based way to improve teaching and learning, also helpful for administration doing, so we're doing evaluations that we can get targeted interventions. Or dealing hand training for reading fluency, so ongoing training that teachers are getting certified in. Multi-teacher systemic supports, MTSS, that's a generalization kind of like brainstorming sense of kids that we start seeing kids struggle a little bit. It's a way to kind of catch them before we need to do any sort of other pieces, because sometimes it would just change a little bit of what we're doing, the environment, the instruction curriculum in the environment, sometimes it can be a little bit similar. How did you find this platform that we're utilizing too? A little at a time. And getting used to that platform and, you know, as we're a data group. Professional development focusing on student performance. Year one of the ELA curriculum review process that's currently happening now. Grade level team leaders, a great opportunity for classroom tier teachers. We'll be needing monthly to go over things that are happening in the building, but also instruction and curriculum and the data focus for like the protocols that we're currently using, that we're going to be using more often. Year two of the math curriculum review process and implementation for HMH, and assessment benchmarks using data-wise processes, and that's what we're talking about. And just kind of like the last piece too, the huge success too, which we should be very proud of, is that once again, HHS is one of nine schools who's been asked to be at or above pre-ELA and test levels in ELA. It's just an incredible accomplishment, and that's the hard work and the dedication to the teachers, the paraprofessionals, and the people that are, that are working very, very hard. So, thanks, guys.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask that I be able to present a recognition from the Commissioner of Education, Pedro Martinez, and recognition of Halifax Public Schools and recognition of their hard work, of their educator staff, students, and families that has, that have raised their English Language Arts MCAS 2025 achievement to pre-pandemic level, levels or higher in grade three to eight. Just...
Yeah, I was doing that. That's important, thank you.
I know, I have people sending me that article, honestly, they're like, look where your school fit. Not that I have a school fit. They're like, I'm like, I'm going somewhere else. Awesome, amazing. Thank you for that feedback.
Uh, no, it's great. That's us.
Sorry, I didn't mean to do that. That was a great thing to make. Sarah?
I do not have anything in addition to everything that's in the consent agenda.
Okay, great.
And I'll get that. Thank you. I have a few things tonight to follow up with what Donna talked about. But the first piece is in my structural assessment update, is we are implementing HMH this year, so that's a math program. HMH being implemented K through eight. We're also at high school implementing all sorts of math. But this year for the math, it's been a lot of work. The teachers have really done an excellent job. It's a huge lift to be implementing new curriculums. We've had professional development, we've had people from HMH come and do model lessons. They will be coming back to work with teachers again. And we really try to offer both model lessons, which just can watch the person from HMH and being an expert, and then also opportunities for teachers to be implementing lessons and get feedback. So it's really been sort of, I think, a good process, and they will be back, and we want to continue that implementation. Sometimes it's not just a curriculum. Curriculum is one thing, it's not a living and breathing thing until it actually happens in the classroom. Implementation is as important, if not more important, than the curriculum. And so I have to enhance opportunities for teachers that are really putting in a lot of time and effort, and I want to continue this implementation or whoever's supporting teachers in the classroom, so that'll be on call. The other piece is the English Language Arts. This is year one, core program review. And it's really, we have a, we have a steering committee that's K through 12, just as we did for math. And then we also have different committees, a K through six committee, there's a grade seven, eight committee. But the K through six committee is called a curriculum council, and it's a group that meets regularly and will be looking at new programs, and will also be looking at piloting those programs in front of basically, you know, January on, a good span of time, teachers will actually get to try out different programs. And so we've been fortunate that Halifax teachers have been a part of that, I funded that through a grant, I'm not going to break that, but other grants that make it a part of that, because it's really important that we have a consistent approach. Ideally, the vertical alignment, as we know, is important because all of our students go separate together, so the experience being as, you know, as comparable, as consistent as possible is really important as they go through grade. So we continue that. And as Brian said, Halifax is really strong in data analysis. They do a lot of work looking at different data, whether it's DIBELS or it's looking at MCAS data, looking at STAR data, and really gauging what needs to happen and what we need to do to perform our instructions. So it's a strong, um, Halifax. And that's really, I don't need to big major names, it's the math and the ELA. This is what happened right now. That's it. Thank you. Dr. DeSantis. In your packet, you will see the October one enrollment charts. The first chart is the homeschool enrollment, grades K through six. You'll see that homeschooling has increased in Halifax by two students. And homeschool enrollment in grade seven through 12 in Halifax has increased by one. The next chart is student enrollment in year one. See Halifax represented by the gold, the yellow line, it has decreased by one student. And that was as of October 1st, the number of students was 530. The next chart is the October one enrollment, which is broken down by schools. It lists the total elementary, and it also lists out the number of Halifax students in the middle school, which is 163, and the total of ninth through 12th graders at the high school, which is 342. These numbers, as you know, are used to generate the percentages listed on the next chart, which is the assessment percentage. You'll see that Halifax in their assessment percentage has gone down by 0.4, whereas the shared cost percentage has gone up by 0.7.
Does that mean, does that mean that overall we have less students, but our percentage represented in the like total number, I mean, not to add my data on the question, but if our enrollment's going down, but also it sounds like the enrollment of like seven through 12 is also...
Your percentage of Silver Lake could still go up, even though your elementary population has declined, does that, did that influence...
So like we have more Silver Lake, so it's our percentage of kids at Silver Lake is not necessarily declining, or does that make our, I'm just, yeah.
If I may.
Absolutely.
There's the number of students from Halifax at Silver Lake, and it may go up, it may go down, but if the population of Silver Lake goes up and the population of Halifax at Silver Lake goes up, you're going to see...
That's correct.
And so the assessment percentages are the populations of the elementary schools, and the shared cost percentage are the percentages at the middle, the preschool, the middle school, and high school.
Right, right. Preschool too. So, so really, it's basically like, just to completely simplify it, is it's Halifax students at free gate, middle school, high school divided by the total number of that student population.
Yes.
Okay. Just for, I'll start.
And if everybody's population goes down, even though our population's going down, the percentage makes sense.
Right. It better be moving, that's all, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Which is why we have the charts.
Makes sense, it's just, I've always wanted more clear information on that. Anyone else have a question? All right, go ahead.
No, that's all here.
All right. All right. So, committee reports. Admiral, you, I don't think they met. Pilgrim Area Collaborative.
I have a couple of lengthy reports. We didn't meet in November, the Pilgrim Area Collaborative met in November. I'm going to share these minute or updates, physical copies with our note taker, so they can be incorporated in the minutes for this meeting. But in November, we will do the audit report for 2025. This was done by Sevis, formerly Markham Accounting Associates, presented. It was a clean audit with no findings. Final version will be published in December, and submitted to the state audit in December. We reviewed that in December and voted to accept the audit. Stay tuned for that. We voted amended budget, board of directors approved the amended budget, amount of $11,291,692.26. The amended budget is done annually every fall. Pilgrim Area budget is approved every May or June. There wasn't much of a change from the spring budget, however, student enrollment is lower than initially predicted. Cumulative surplus, so the collaboratives are different than districts as they're funded and tuition based on how many kids come each year versus an allotment that the city council or board has selected opt to fund the public schools with every year. At the end of every year, there's leftover money from the PAC budget. It can be saved in what's called the cumulative surplus after the annual audit is done. If you were familiar with city PAC budgets, it's similar to the concept of what towns call free cash. It's important for collaboratives to keep healthy cumulative surplus in order to draw from in years that might fall short. In the past few years after COVID, PAC was able to save more than the average, as PAC was getting more students and providing more services than anticipated. State law prohibits collaboratives to have more than 25% of their annual budget saved in its cumulative surplus. PAC also traditionally tries to return 25% of its annual surplus back to its member towns, however, in the past few years, that little to no surplus, no funds are returned to the member towns. This year, it was voted to give back 146,700, uh, $700 to the, of the fiscal year, 25 surplus back to the member towns as follows. There's a list of all of the towns. For Halifax specifically, $0 were returned, and that is because we had zero students attending the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, so there was no money to return. So that's noted as a note here. There are Halifax students that attend Silver Lake, so there was some money given back to Silver Lake, and that is factored into their budget. There's an additional 160,000 was voted to transfer to the PAC Building Facilities Fund with the intention of funding a playground at the standalone building of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. There was a number of policy updates that PAC is doing. The first read was done in the 1,000 and 3,000 series, which is business finance policies. Sorry, this was long. I'm going to skip to the December, so the final version of the audit was, was also approved for Massachusetts General Law and DUC regulations. Both documents are needed to be sent to DUC and to the chairs of each member district by July, at December 31st. The audit will also be sent to the state auditor's office. All the negotiated notifications will be done through email. All documents will be published on the PAC website under government documents as well as for easy access. As I mentioned, the cumulative surplus, we've already talked about that, that was discussed again at the December meeting. The PAC Board of Directors reviewed policies in the 1,000 to 3,000, and then again, there was a first read done in the 8,000 series. There will be another review of those policies in the February meeting, there's going to be in January, and then the whole policy manual is on the PAC website, and the revisions that are approved will be uploaded shortly. Other updates, PAC's Executive Director and Board Chair presented at the Mass Association of Student Council Conference in November together, and it went really well. of Student Council Conference in November together, and it went really well. Boston 25 News had an hour news segment on special education in Massachusetts over the Thanksgiving weekend, and PAC was, Pilgrim Area Collaborative was featured. And then bids were received for the new playground that I just mentioned, for the standalone school in Plymouth. It's expected that the work will start this spring, more upgrades are coming to the building through PAC's partnership with Fox Rock and the recent signing of the new 10-year lease for the facility. So again, I'm going to make sure that those are given to our note taker. One of the things that was noted in our last audit was, we had a very favorable audit from the state, however, an area of opportunity was that not enough of the reporting back to local school committees was happening, so this will be a feature that happens going forward at a local school committee.
Nice, thanks.
I'm welcome. Thank you, Becky Hoffman, helping out together for us.
I know, it makes us look good. Unit 31, I know they met, I don't mind.
We had a joint meeting, and our Director of Student Services, our Tech Director, and our Curriculum Director, all presented budget overviews and presented information that applied to all of our districts with regards to the upcoming budget cycle.
Thank you. Negotiations, we did not meet, capital budgets didn't meet, and then policies, we already did the, the last time, right, we did the past.
The first, we waived the first reading. So you could waive and approve the second reading, the policies. There's some which you don't want to approve, you could pull those out, and you could pull the, you could have pulled the approved ones first and then have discussion of the policies that you wanted to discuss.
Do you want to waive the second read, as I don't have any concerns about policies? So we can vote to waive the second read and approve the policies, but we want to read all of them. No, not the entirety, I meant the title. All right, I'll make a motion to waive the second read of the, should policies listed and approved, policy ADDA, background checks, ECAB, access to buildings and grounds, EFBA, school food and nutrition, meal modifications, GBEBC, gifts to and solicitations by staff, JJE, student fundraising activities, KVE, relations with parent booster organizations, KBG, parent advisory councils, KI deserves the school. All right, I'll take a vote. Any discussion? Jody? Lori? Jessica?
Yes.
My thoughts are yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we just got our new liaison to youth and rest, so I think that would be impressive.
And our call.
And then our PTO rep is not here, but now is Jody, so hopefully next time. I don't have any other matters to discuss, and just for dates to remember, December 23rd is an early release date, December 24th is when the winter holiday vacation begins, January 5th is when schools reopen, January 19th is Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and our next Halifax Elementary School Committee Day is January 26th. I will now enter to the conference chair. I will go to the chair and see if it's up or down. Thank you. Second. All right, I'll be real soft, Jody? Lori? Yes. Lauren? All right, thanks, everyone. I hope you have a little holiday.